I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh geez, I forgot roll call. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Antoine is here, Ms. Bonick.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Dr. Demas.
Here.
Ms. Ikorst.
Here.
Ms. Rice.
Here.
And Mr. Young.
Here.
Alright, can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Support.
Moved by Demas, supported by Rice.
Yes.
I would just recommend that anybody wishing to speak yet public comment will do both times together prior to going into closed session, and we'll also do board discussion before we go into closed session. We're gonna go into closed session for the superintendent evaluation and we're not making any decisions or taking any action after. Is that okay with the board?
It's okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to celebrations and successes.
So, I want to take a minute to just recognize the Board of Education. The whole Michigan Association of School Boards and the National Association of School Boards declare January your board appreciation month. And so, we want to take some time tonight to just say thank you to our board for all you do. And, of course, our administrative team has put together some super nice gifts for you on behalf of our students, staff, and families. A couple cards for you there, and we actually have some treats for closed session as well. But the marquee event for tonight is our middle school choir is here to perform a few songs for you. So we'll take just a minute to get them in and get organized, and once they're ready, you guys can just turn your chairs and you are in the front row.
Wow.
As you should be on board appreciation. So let me get the middle school kids on their way, and thank you again, parents, for being here, and family members, and we'll get this thing going.
They are blurry. Wayne's not blurry. He said they were. They were bad. Yeah, but we're blurry. My hair looks better now. We need a retake. Yeah, but not individual. I don't think. Individual too? He would not panic you when you walk in.
Well, we've been through TSD.
Yeah. It's like an organizational meeting. I ask myself that all the time. What is going on? Probably on Tuesday night, I'm guessing. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rising up, back on the street. Did my time, took my chances. Felt the distance, now I'm back on my feet. Just a man in his will to survive. So many times, it happens too fast. You trade your passion for glory. Don't lose your grip on the dreams of the past. You must fight just to keep them alive. It's the eye of the tiger, it's the thrill of the fight. Rising up to the challenge of our rival. And the last known survivor stalks his prey in the night. And he's watching us all with the eye of the tiger. Face to face, out in the heat. Hands up, staying hungry. They stack the odds until we take to the street. For the kill with the skill to survive. It's the eye of the tiger, it's the thrill of the fight. Rising up to the challenge of our rival. And the last known survivor stalks his prey in the night. And he's watching us all with the eye of the tiger. Rising up, straight to the top. Had the guts, had the glory. Felt the distance, now I'm not gonna stop. Just a man in his will to survive. It's the eye of the tiger, it's the thrill of the fight. Rising up to the challenge of our rival. And the last known survivor stalks his prey in the night. And he's watching us all. It's the eye of the tiger, it's the thrill of the fight. Rising up to the challenge of our rival. And the last known survivor stalks his prey in the night. And he's watching us all with the eye of the tiger. The eye of the tiger. Far away, in a far-off land lives a child who loves to sing. She opens up her fragile heart and her song it takes wing. She sings la 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 la. La 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 la. La 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 la. On the grass, on the cool green grass that was first and she could run. She lies with air open like a vent in the warmth of summer sun. She sings la 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 la. La 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 la. La 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 la. She lies with air open like a vent. She lies with air open like a vent. She lies with air open like a vent. She cries for life when the day is done. She fears what night may bring. She cries for those who have never loved and for those who ever sing. Go down, Moses. Way down in Egypt land, tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. When Israel was in Egypt land, let my people go. Aggressed so hard they could not stand, let my people go. Go down, Moses. Way down in Egypt land, tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. Let us hope the Lord, but Moses said, let my people go. If not, I'll strike your firstborn dead, let my people go. Go down, Moses. Way down in Egypt land, tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. Go, go, go. Go, go, go. Let my people go. Your foe shall not be before you stand, let my people go. And you'll possess their cannons land, let my people go. Go down, Moses. Way down in Egypt land, tell old Pharaoh to let my people go. Go down, Moses, tell old Pharaoh. 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 Go down, Moses. Way down in Egypt land, tell old Pharaoh to let my people go.
Well, Mr. Kay, can you tell us, tell the board a little bit about who's here with us?
Yes, so this is the combined seventh and eighth grade choir from Romeo Middle. And the songs that we performed for you, the first one, Eye of the Tiger, we were like, that's a good one to kind of get the crowd going. And then, the last two, She Sings and Go Down, Moses, we're gonna be performing at the MSVMA Choir Festival in March. So we wanted a chance to perform that once before. So thanks so much for having us today.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great job everybody. Great job.
So we'll take a couple minute break. Parents and guests that are here, you can head out and meet up with your middle schooler over in the hallway and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Man, I wish I could sing. I can't carry a tune and sing my life. I can't even do Happy Birthday in tune. Now, Eye of the Tiger, I played on my front shorn. I'll just have you know.
I've been in this voice for 12 years, I've never experienced anything like it.
It's awesome, so cool.
Great songs watching you.
Such a great treat.
Yeah.
You kidding me?
It's good to see them come to us.
I'm surprised that this song's like pleasant and surprise, especially right now. Did you notice?
Ooh, buen apetito.
Yeah, right away.
I ate there for New Year's Eve, we went early. We did five o'clock, yeah. I think it was so good.
The way the girls were dressed.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Whatever that, so, I'm happy. I don't know this choir.
I haven't done... It's always this fall.
She does a good job. She does, a little bit. That was, I've never experienced anything like that.
Harmonizing is pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your ability to harmonize. What a treat.
Is it? I saw that. And K-Blacks is rated highly too. I haven't used my...
I don't think they're that bad. For me. I don't think they're that bad, but you know, when I was...
I have used both of my JLs and K-Blacks.
My hair was like short.
They're both good.
Cause I put rollers in.
Oh, wow.
And I never do rollers.
Do you think we're good?
Moderately longer hair. Did you rollers, Chris, today?
Yeah, I'll comb them.
Oh, watch Wayne.
My rollers made my hair go all the way up. Oh. Oops. Should move up. She's been required, right, move up to the front. Come up here.
I mean, just looking at that, you just, you can almost pick out, like... And what's weird is to picture, like, I kind of dazed for a minute and was trying to picture, cause all three of my kids obviously did choir, drew, you know, drew Romeo and... Like how tiny they were doing that. Like it's hard to remember them being that awkward.
Really? Is that their spring play or midwinter?
No, I think that's the, they're doing three, so it's just a second. It was awful, it was sound.
Wow.
Yeah. He must not be a Michigan fan. Just kidding. So we had, you know the Peters, right? Brian and Donna Peters. Well, Brian's a big Bears fan and we're Patriots fans, so we had them over to watch the game yesterday. And my husband put a Chicago Bear.
I thought Mean Girls was last, Brian. I wanted to go, but I was like, I probably...
And Brian had to go into the bathroom.
Now, Donna Peters was the, was at St. John's Hall.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, you're thinking probably Donna Peterson. Donna Peters was Indian Hills kindergarten teacher.
That was cool. Can we get a repeat? She has Shelby, Zach, and Brian.
Then one of her daughters is not a teacher.
Nope. Alright. Coming back together, can I have a motion for consent action? The minutes from the regular meeting on December 11th?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Rice, supported by Ikorst. Did I get that correct? Okay.
Moved by Rice.
Rice, Ikorst. Any questions or concerns regarding the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our organizational meeting. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a nomination.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Anita Bonick as president, Chris Young as vice president, Catherine Rice as secretary, and Rachel Ikorst as treasurer.
Second.
Support in second. All the people nominated, I'll just say I'm willing to serve Chris. Rachel?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Yes, everybody's accepting the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. Ben motion and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have the option, Mike, of just having you complete for this meeting and then we'll make the switch. Is that fine?
Yes, please.
Alright, everybody good? Alright, moving on to the approval, resolution two, which is the approval of designation of a depository of school funds.
Support.
Moved by Demas, supported by Connor. Are there any questions or concerns? This is PNC Bank, Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, UMB Bank, and other state or national bank savings loans associations, credit unions organized to operate within the state of Michigan, provided by the law. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is resolution three, approval of authorized official district signers. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Ikorst, supported by Connor. This is to authorize the superintendent to sign contracts, agreements, and purchase orders, executive director of business to sign purchase orders, contracts and agreements as the superintendent's designee, and the board of ed treasurer to sign all account checks and appropriate school district documents in person or via electronic signature. Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is resolution four, which is the approval of designation of day, place, and time for regular meetings of the Board of Education. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Connor.
Support.
Support by Antoine. This is bylaw 1002, which is, will be, the organization meeting will help, be held annually during the month of January, and the business meetings will include the establishment of a schedule of regular board meetings for the year, which we sent to you, then these would be posted. You'll also get meeting invites. All in fav... Oh.
I have a recommendation to make.
Dr. Demas. Dr. Demas.
I would like to see our feasibility of having our board meetings at our various buildings.
I would also concur with that statement. I think this would be a great opportunity, when we do have our board meetings, that each building is visited and gives the public an opportunity to also see the beautiful dollars at work with our sinking funds, our millages, and bonds. I all, heavily in support of this.
And also gives the staff an opportunity to showcase what's going on in their various buildings. This is something the district used to do in the past, and I was, I'm hoping we can...
I would just add, as, it sounds like a good thing, but you have to remember that for people that do want to follow our board meetings, having a regular board meeting location, time, and place creates less confusion, less, I thought it was here, I didn't know it was there, A. B, we have these people that are all set up electronically, we have this set up electronically. As someone who had to go around and set up remote meetings, it is a lot of work, and the technology piece to it doesn't always work, it's very frustrating. The buildings do not have the same sort of setups. They, many of them have after-school care that goes on until six at night, so large spaces are actually being used by kids. It, it's not what we think it is. I mean, we think we're doing a good thing, but we're actually, can be causing...
I would still see, I would still like to see a change of location, preferably the high school. That is something I've wanted to see for a couple of years now, just to show how much money has gone into this district by the voters, and they should see that. The space has been great, we've done elementaries, we've done everything but, some of our new spaces, and I think, yes, we can pick one, but it has to be different this year.
Just remember that the high school is literally having student events. Like think about what location you would actually be able to use at the high school that's not being used for kids Monday, Monday nights.
Well, there's events going on here too sometimes with our meetings.
Are we suggesting that we move meetings monthly, rotate monthly, or are we gonna pick a new location for the entirety of the year?
I think both are being expressed right now, but I'm fine, as long as we, if it's one, just a different location.
I would, I would suggest maybe a balance, and that's quarterly, we could schedule a regular meeting with enough advance notice, you know, on location, at a building, so we have time to get our media partners and get the public notified of the alternate location. And that would allow us the opportunity to, you know, one of the things that I was gonna share with the board when we meet tonight is, we're looking to restructure celebrations and successes this year to be more student highlights. So, that might afford us to kind of, if we're gonna be at a facility for the meeting, then our highlight would be in conjunction with that facility, cause sometimes it is easier for the folks in a building to highlight something in their building versus bring the show on the road to another one. But, as Mrs. Bonick said, you know, we invested and put a lot of time and energy into this, because I remember the days of people talking about how awful the Retzy was for board meetings because of the, the noise and all of that, so... But I think there's a balance here, I think we can get out, once a quarter, to another building for a meeting, even potent, it might even be better for us to target a couple of the study sessions, because then there isn't action in that evening, but we could still make time to get, get some student highlights, so I think there's a balance.
Yeah, I would think maybe two buildings in the fall and two buildings in the spring.
Okay.
And we rotated, you know, following year we do something else.
Yep.
And for one of those buildings, if we could see the high school used, thank you.
I think we have to look at the benefit.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll do a destination meeting once per quarter?
Yes.
Yes? I think that's a great idea.
So once, once we're set with the schedule, then I'll go back and kind of talk with Cabinet and pick the right sequence of them. I think there's some key meetings that need to be held here, the budget hearing and things like that.
I definitely think it needs to be like workshops and not major voting meetings, cause I just think our residents have come to expect the meetings to be here.
Yeah.
At a location.
That's fine.
And be able to hear, be able to stand at a podium and speak, and not be where it's half and half not, cause we don't have a lot of spaces that generate quietness to be able to have a meeting.
Sure.
Heaven was not fun, the refrigerators would turn on when we were at Retzy, it, I mean...
Yet the elementary buildings, at least at this period of time, were really looking at the cafeteria, is where the, the actual meeting would need to be held. But, but we'll, we'll find a, we'll find a balance.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, can I have...
And I also, I also think that the subcommittee should decide whether it be virtual or in-house meetings.
Yeah, we're not voting on that right now. That's separate.
That's on the calendar you submitted, right?
No, remember, I submitted the joint one, all that's in your board packet is this.
I just want to be sure.
Yeah. And it says on there that, based on the committee's availability. So what you're voting on right now, though, is the board meetings that are in your packet, the regular board meetings and the...
The monthly meetings, right?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution five, which is the approval of designation of electronic transfer officer, the ETO.
Motion.
Support.
Moved by Chris, or Young, Mr. Young, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Supported by Dr. Demas. This is to designate the executive director of business services as the electronic transfer officer. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next is resolution six, the appointment of the administrator to post public meetings.
Motion.
Support.
Moved by Young, supported by Antoine. This is to authorize the superintendent to post public meetings. Any questions?
Is there a place where those could be posted other than entrance doors to buildings? Because I know most of those doors aren't being utilized by the community.
We post them at the board office, and then they're, of course, online.
Okay.
So, I'm not sure where else we would put them.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe the front page to tag them, so they're not buried under the BOE tab. I don't know, that's just a thought.
Do the newsletter blasts, like the Friday messages, the weekly, a suggestion might be to include, you know, if, when the meeting is for that, for that month?
We've definitely done that before, we've, and we certainly will want to do it if we're gonna be changing locations, so...
For sure, but if more people, you know, it might be able to generate more interest in coming to board meetings if everybody was reminded of them.
And I like the idea Dr. Robinson mentioned too, with, if we're gonna have it elsewhere, make it special to that building, and that would be a great time too, if we are changing buildings, to post it and invite the community to come out. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, ideas? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution seven is approval of district legal representation and resources. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Moved by Young.
Support.
Support by Connor. This is to approve the continuation...
This is to approve the continuation of the law firms that provide legal services to our district. Any questions or concerns?
Can, Antoine, can we just be reminded which law firm does what for us, for our district?
So our primary counsel is Clark Hill. That, you know, they, they also help up, support us in some unique contracts and things like that. So when we're working with the municipalities or developing custodial or law and RFPs and those contracts, Miller Johnson is our policy provider. They do help us on some student discipline matters, but they're a full, full-service educational law firm, you know, that, that can really do anything. Trune at times has helped us in election and bond and millage planning. You know, currently right now, I don't remember the last time we've used that firm, but they're, they're here, you know, and there's, there's no, there's no fee to have them as a designated firm. We pay hourly rates whenever we interact. And then Miller Camfield currently right now is our bond and election law firm. Did I get that right, Vicki? All right.
How much do we pay them an hour?
Oh, you don't want to ask me that.
That comes, it has come. We've had those reports.
Yeah, there's a separate rate sheet based, you know, we can, we can put the rate, the fee rates. It depends on the level of the attorney and, and all of that. So I don't want to speak to a specific number for any law firm without going back and, so we can put those sheets together and, and put those in the next financial report.
Do we have access to Miller Johnson as individual board members to call and ask questions? Or would that, would I?
It would, it would probably come through me, but yes.
We would do that, that sort of channel. Okay.
Through MASB though, Catherine? There is legal Brad Banasik that serves as a school board expert. And we pay, like, you're a member of that.
Okay.
So he's really generic, you know, like high-level board law.
Kind of knows the deal.
Okay.
Yep. All in favor of Resolution Seven signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. March, motion carries. Next are informational updates and new business.
So just a few things tonight, because it's the organizational meeting, we'll, we'll have more when we get to the regular meeting later this month. Just a reminder, email just came out, the next county school boards association meeting is, and Lake Shore Schools on the 23rd of January, and they've asked that we RSVP by January 16th. That would be next Tuesday, so if you can just let Antoinette know if you plan to attend, we can let the folks in Lake Shore know. I believe that it's Andrew Cox, who is the former health department director, but now has a higher level role that oversees the health department and a McCombe community action and a few other things. I believe he is presenting that night about county services. So that's it for communications, Mrs. Bonnick, unless you have something different.
No. I can't think of anything.
So at our December regular meeting, I had mentioned that we had some action to attend to here, you know, in the first part of January, and we would use the existing subcommittees from last year to, to execute those two meetings. So we've had a shift in, because of a conflict in terms of the policy meeting, so January 11th, 5:00 PM for that. And Julia, I'm not sure if you've updated the calendar invite or not, but, okay. So hopefully that works for everybody. And then for our facilities subcommittee, we've got to look at some bids from some of the Crowe's well work prior to the January regular meeting. So we're targeting January 16th at 4:00 PM for that meeting. Both of those meetings are, are planned to be virtual. And then, Mrs. Bonnick, I just left this on here because we're still kind of in, in that process. Now that, now that we have officers elected by your bylaws, the president assigns committees and then we go with a schedule from there. That's not formal action, but I know Dr. Demas, you had made a comment about a desire with the committee meeting schedule, so this I think would be the appropriate time to make sure we understand that. And that's, that the actual committee decides the forum that the group would meet in. So we, I know that Mrs. Bonnick shared with you kind of this working draft of kind of blending the meetings, you know, together. So we just kind of see the both of them, which I think, it, it was helpful for me to put that together because when they live in isolation, you just don't kind of see the magnitude of touch points or, or, you know, commitments. So again, thank you for your service because when I put a document like that together, I realize how much time and energy being on the board is. So the, there is a couple of unique instances in there that we've kind of designated either as committee of the whole or potential committee of the whole because of the business of the district. And so one of those examples I would just share is when we're getting ready for the budget hearing, it just makes sense to have that finance subcommittee meeting be a committee of the whole. So any member of the board wants to come. And if we're committee of the whole, then we're in person. And in most cases, we will just meet here. But that schedule is kind of still in draft form and I will get with Mrs. Bonnick and get that as a, as a solid draft that she can share with you. And then I just simply think at a regular meeting, Mrs. Bonnick, if you can announce, you know, you know, that the subcommittee meeting is set, schedule is set, we'll get it on the website. And that schedule lists who's on the subcommittees and, and all of that. And, and that is a fluid schedule. If the business of the district warrants that we add additional subcommittee meetings, we will. And we've seen that happen, you know, primarily with facilities, but also with some of the other committees, so.
I noticed on the current meeting schedule, we do have a safety and security. Is that fluid right now or is that kind of put in place?
Right now, there's quarterly meetings on the schedule for that committee.
Okay. As committee as a whole or just the first one?
Just the first one.
Okay. Thank you.
If we have a particularly beefy policy meeting committee, I would be inclined to recommend that be a meeting of the whole. If there's a large amount of things that need to be attended to.
Which is fine, but also remember there's a first reading and a second. So we are at this board table twice for everybody to do it. So just, it doesn't matter, but I trust that committee members are hearing and asking questions and then the minutes go out and then we do one reading, which doesn't mean it's approved. We do the reading and that's another time to have full board public discussion.
Understood.
So at least in the policy case, there is a built-in time twice at the board table, which that's not the case for the other ones.
I like the idea of when we discuss in our committee meetings, that we have a firm grasp of what's being read for the first time. And then all the ideas kind of flow from that and it's in, like a round robin sort of, everybody can pour their ideas out. At the table, I think it's less likely that we're gonna give our opinions on particular items. That's all I'm saying. When we have something that needs to be voted on and it's bigger.
When it's committee of the whole though, you are still, I just want, it's still, when there's four people, then it's still open to the public. So you're still the public both ways. She was just simply saying that you wouldn't say anything, but still open to the public.
What's happening in facilities these days and health and safety, I think those should be committees of the whole. Cause there's a lot of business being transacted and that's a good.
Sure.
I think what I'm.
And the beautiful part of committee of the whole is if you feel you want to be there, you can.
Yes.
But if you don't feel you need to be there.
That's right.
You don't have to.
I think what I'm asking is that can, is that a possibility? Because I don't know, that we can say, hey, we're going to make this particular policy meeting a committee, a meeting of the whole. Is that, is that a thing?
What I would recommend is once you start formulating the agenda, that's when you would know. Cause some of them will just be wrote, the law changed, we have to do the mileage.
Right, right.
So you, that wouldn't be a big deal, right? But once you start to see the agenda formulating, then.
Then you make the decision?
It's not even so much to me, a decision as much as the three committee members would start to say, this is pretty meaty. I think others might want to be there. So then you would go that route.
Okay.
Do you already have an agenda for Wednesday then? Cause I mean, that's only two days from now.
I think the other thing that, it happened more when we had our previous policy provider because they were just overly cumbersome and known for that, is when you get an update, the update may need to be divided. And it might need to be multiple meetings for the committee versus just one to, to take, you know, and, and this is actually a pretty healthy update. So the policy committee, you know, can look at that agenda and we can get as far as we can get and then need to call another meeting. The uniqueness of the committee meeting structure, as Mrs. Bonnick is saying, is they have to have two public considerations. And that's not just for the board. You know what I'm saying? That would be for the public to comment. And, and in between the, the packet, you know, or the minutes from that meeting and the first regular meeting, we certainly can provide clarifications, but even more so, if there was a need for clarifications in between the first reading and the second reading, which often are a month apart, that's where I would say if there's a level of concern, then an additional subcommittee meeting could potentially behold, be held and, and we could make it committee of the whole, you know, in that regard, prior to the second reading or consideration, which then means it's approved.
Okay.
Okay?
So the last thing on subcommittees, I don't have them in front of me, but I know I wrote to you and said, if you have a burning desire on one or a change, you know, just let me know. Because Rachel, were you on finance before?
Yes.
Oh, so that wouldn't really be a change, but generally the treasurer's, that is the one that that one is on. So we'll just have to look to see if there's any other shifting. So if you guys could email me, say by next Monday, is that reasonable? And if I don't hear from you, I'm going to assume you're fine on the ones you're on or if I need to swap you with somebody, I can do that.
Consistency is super important with committee membership. I mean, we're, we're rolling now. You know what I'm saying? In some regards, we got our new board members in the fold now. You've had a series of meetings, but that doesn't mean we can't change. I would just say, you know, one desire to change creates multiple changes so that we have an equal balance of committee assignments.
Is now a time to address the time holder that you have in there?
Yep. That would be when we put the draft out, if there's a issue with the time.
Yeah. Cause the curriculum, I don't know if anybody else, I would just have an issue with starting at four, earliest I could be there was 4:30.
Yeah, I already let them know that. But I think once the three committees, just the way it works now is usually kind of get asked, like for instance, policy was scheduled for the 10th. Catherine was like, I really can't make it. So we just tried to see if we could switch to the 11th, you know? So I, I think we, we continue to do that with the intent of having the three board members be able to be, be there. Yes.
And we will have a designated alternate.
Yeah.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things in terms of, just reminders more than anything. We are rapid, this week, we're kind of bringing the bid process to a close, post-bid interviews for Crowe's well playground, site work and the playground equipment. Those will be on the January 22nd meeting and the facilities subcommittee will take a look at those next week. And then in terms of our election campaign, the, you know, there's some nuance to this presidential primary, if you're a permanent absentee voter, because you have to, you have to request what ballot you want. And we're, you know, once some of us started getting those and looking at, there's choices here, we're, we're putting some marketing together because, you know, not just for who's here tonight, but more so for who might watch the recording of the meeting. If you, if you're not going to participate in the primary, either party, that, that is certainly your choice. There is an option to get the local only ballot in all of our municipalities. And I'm just, I want to make sure that people understand that, whether you're a per, permanent absentee voter or you're, you can still apply, you can still vote absentee all the way up, that there is a local only option, if in fact you don't want to participate in the presidential primary. And we really want to encourage people to do that versus saying, I'm not choosing to vote in the primary, then we're not going to have their input on our two millage renewals. So we're doing some work to, to, to kind of bring some attention to that, because those are sitting on people's counters right now. If you're a permanent absentee voter and it will come in, in the aftermath of applying to vote absentee. Secondly, our lobby boards, we're working on making sure we got enough easels and all of that with the information about our renewals. Those will be pushed out at the schools next week. And we have confirmation that on or shortly after January 18th, our, all of our municipalities will be beginning to send out absentee ballots. So pretty quick turnaround here with our campaign and getting, getting information out there. Done a lot of presentations and people are, people are understanding, some more than others, you know, of the routine of this and, and the importance. That's all I have, Mrs. Bonnick.
All right. Is there anybody wishing to speak to the board tonight? I didn't see anybody, but, or anybody for the, any topic? All right. Before we go into closed session, board discussion for the good of the district?
Just want to say, I'm grateful that we do have that committee as a whole for safety and security. I believe it's going to be a serious concern for any board around the country, around the world. We're doing our job as our, as the Board of Education to ensure that faculty, staff and students and the people that come into our buildings feel safe, they can learn in a safe environment. And it's going to be a big year for not only safety and security. While we, you know, continuously push and train and get services, facilities is going to be big. And with the upcoming elections, I encourage you to vote yes. These buildings provide not only an aesthetic appeal to people moving in, but it's the benefit to the residents that are here for their students. And a lot of the work such as doing parking lots or havoc work and the classrooms, this stuff really helps our students learn in a better environment, makes it safer and ensures that our buildings stay on, even in the frigid temperatures of the cold in the winter. So please get out there and vote yes. Thank you.
I'm good.
Dr. Demas?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Romeo Middle School students for coming out tonight and their parents. Really did appreciate them coming to a, a school board meeting and, and singing for us. It was great.
That was very cool.
I would like to thank the middle school band for coming out too. It was, it was a great, they did a great job. Keep up the good work.
I think, I just want to close the gap on our evaluation. For those of you that are in the audience who might watch this, we voted in December to give Dr. Robinson a highly effective rating and we used a, a tool that we put together. And we created a summary statement that I'll just read out loud. This will go into his file as well. The Board of Education met on two occasions to review, discuss and finalize the 2023 evaluation for Dr. Todd Robinson. The Board utilized the approved superintendent evaluation tool that includes the following components, visionary leadership, policy and governance, instructional leadership, communication and community relations, organizational management, professionalism and ethics. The Board concluded that Dr. Robinson continues to serve RCS in a positive manner with students at the forefront. Specifically, the Board is pleased with the strategic plan, Romeo Virtual Academy, bond progress, progress and the work to expand the academy model to the middle school level. model to the middle school level. He has built and maintained strong relationships with staff, our community, and area businesses, and remains committed to creating a culture of collaboration. The Board will be meeting with Dr. Robinson to discuss the goals and expectations for 2024. That's what we're doing in our closed session. We look forward to additional workshop meetings to discuss instructional progress and data on new curricular initiatives, strategic plan priorities, and the facilities master plan. At the December 11th meeting, the Board passed a resolution indicating a highly effective rating for Dr., for 2023. So, thank you, Dr. Robinson. And I would like to also just state, thank you for everyone who, I haven't read all the cards yet, but the plants and the gift cards from the community restaurants are, are very much appreciated. And it's, it's been really nice that people do identify the work that goes into being on the board. And I'm excited for another year. So, with that, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Where did the plant come from?
Sure.
It's beautiful. Thank you, whoever donated the plants. I, I love plants.
I'm gonna guess, Antoinette went out and purchased the plants? No.
Was it Mr. Essien?
Mr. Essien.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
All right.
It's wonderful.
Motion.
Sorry.
Motion for closed session by Mr. Young.
Support.
Support by Antoine. Roll call.
Mr. Antoine, is she yes? Ms. Bonnick?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Demas?
Yes.
Ms. Ikors?
Yes.
Ms. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.